I don't remember when I first met Rachel, but I remember the project that I first worked with her on was to make Second East and Third South, the intersection there safer. And then she went on and has done extraordinary things. Got herself elected to the city council three years ago. Yeah. And represents that district. BYU grad, BYU love school grad. Okay. I'm sorry I didn't ask for any of this information ahead of time. Yeah, you were working. Yeah, she was in court all day. So please welcome the honorable, or whatever we do, our city councilor, Rachel Whipple.
I was just building suspense there, right? All right, my friends. So good to see you here today. Love that, that you're part of this program, that you're interested in civic engagement. So how many of you are like poly sci majors? That is the majority, I believe. What are the rest of you?
Music.
Music. That will save the world. Okay, what else? You don't have to save the world with your degree. You just tell me what you are.
Geography and global environmental.
Excellent. Anybody else want to volunteer?
Global supply chain management.
Global supply chain management. Wow, that we realized was incredibly vulnerable with the pandemic, right? Has that changed your whole field?
I'm a program.
Yeah? It's a good time to study it. Does anyone else want to volunteer what they're doing? No, you don't. So my undergraduate degree is in geology. I'd started off in civil engineering and apparently I'm too slapdash and artistic of a person to really cut it as an engineer. But I really loved rocks and hiking and drawing, like doing those strat sed drawings. They were great. I did not stay in geology. I got married. We put my education on hold while my husband did his PhD in graduate school. And I had kids. And then after his postdoc, we got recruited to come back here. So he's one of the professors here in the biology department. And when he started teaching, I got to go back to school. I took classes as a postback. And it was just like all the fun stuff that I didn't have time to do as an undergrad. So a lot of anthropology, I did attic Greek, I did literary criticism. Like, you know, the really fun stuff that me as a science major didn't have time to do and honestly probably should have done in the first place, but there we are. After that, I did a master's at BYU in comparative studies. My focus was on environmental humanities. It was this fun choose your own adventure mix of philosophy, ecology, and literary criticism. So I was able to kind of draw on that geology background and the environmental work that I'd been doing with nonprofits and turn it into a degree. And like honestly, my favorite philosopher is David Hume. He's hilarious. So I like him over Kant. I'm not a Platonist. Like if you're a philosophy person, that tells you a lot about me. Then we went to Belgium for a year sabbatical. And during that time, I realized I did not want to be an adjunct professor with my master's degree. I liked doing the conversations, the research, like being part of a productive conversation to kind of move issues forward that I cared about. And you can do that in academia, but you have to have a PhD and be in a tenure track position to have the time to do it. And even then, your time demands are hard. And so I decided instead of pursuing a PhD, I would go to law school and just leave academia entirely. So I applied to law school at BYU again because husband on faculty meant I got tuition covered. It's a good benefit. And so my acceptance letter to BYU Law School is sent to my Belgium address, which I think is kind of cool. I came here and went to law school and I graduated in 2020, which was a super fun year to graduate from everything. Were you guys graduating from high school then? Some of you were though, and it stunk. My daughter also graduated from high school in 2020. We had plans to go like paragliding together on our graduation. That did not happen. So I spent more than 15 years as a stay-at-home mom. And it's really hard to kind of build a career after that. So for me, the path was to go back to school. But I had two different paths. One was education and the other was community work and working with nonprofits. I'd also blogged with a group for a while. That's old history. But that built my reputation in certain circles, which helped me get appointed like to the Board of Trustees for the Nature Conservancy, where I still serve. And I've served on other nonprofits. And once you start serving in these organizations, you kind of learn how they work, but you also learn how to more effectively advocate within your community on those issues because you're kind of learning the tools. And so while, was it while I was in grad school or before that? I got tapped to be a neighborhood chair. So in Provo, we have all of these different neighborhoods. Just south of campus is the Joaquin neighborhood. South of that is the Mazur neighborhood. That's where I live. And our neighborhood program was working really well. We'd have a meeting every month. Our, our community oriented police officer would come and give us our crime update and we could complain about the drug house that they still hadn't done anything about to them. We would have people from parks come and talk to us and we could ask questions or power. It was a really great forum for bringing up community concerns and to get information from the city to the neighbors. And I'm like, well, I can help with that. I don't want to be in charge. So I accepted the nomination to be the vice chair. And then wouldn't you know that chair went AWOL? Like within a month, he was gone. And so the cop is calling me saying, when's the next neighborhood meeting? We need you to do this. And I really hadn't wanted to take on that much responsibility. But there I was. And I'm kind of a type A personality and so I'm like, well, we're going to do this and we're going to do it right. So I ended up being the neighborhood chair of the Mazur neighborhood when UDOT, that's the Utah Department of Transportation, decided to redo 300 South between University Avenue and 700 East. Do you guys know that stretch of street that I'm talking about? You don't? You can go down there. It's not that far from here. It's a mile away. At that time, this seven block stretch was two lanes in each direction with a center turn lane, a suicide lane. And there were no crosswalks across the street. There were no lights, no nothing. So in this almost mile stretch, people would go really, really fast. We had lots of drag racing. And it was terribly dangerous to try to cross the street in a car, in a bike, or walking. In fact, when we moved into our house in 2009, there was a crosswalk on the street across from our house. And within a few months after we moved there, there was a crew grinding out the crosswalk. And I'm like, why are you taking this away? And they're like, well, it's not safe enough to have a crosswalk here. And I'm just like, if it's not safe, then we need to do something to make it safe. So with that, I started going to every meeting that I could, to bike events, to city hall meetings, anything to ask about how we could get it to be safer. So by the time I was the neighborhood chair and UDOT was doing this project, I had already figured out who had power to change this. But it took like lots of boring meetings where I was talking to the wrong people before I could find the right meetings and the right people to talk to. And those meetings, some of them were like pitchfork meetings. You know, think about like Parks and Rec, like the angry town hall things. So people were very, very angry about these changes. They were angry about the idea of not being able to do left turns anymore. Because UDOT's original plan was to just put a concrete median in the center of the street for the whole stretch with no north-south crossing. Because then you wouldn't have any left turns, you would take away those conflicts and the possibility for those accidents and traffic would flow great. You can see how this would be a terrible idea for a neighborhood though, right? It would completely cut it in half. It was already badly cut in half. In fact, for years before this, I had gotten my own stop sign and like a little vest. And neighborhood kids would gather at my house on the south side of Third South. And I would go out and stop traffic. And once I got everybody stopped in both directions with my little sign, I would herd my ducklings across. And then we'd walk to school and pick up more kids. So we had our own walking bus. But because I was doing that every day for years, I was building my reputation in the community as somebody who not only saw a problem, but was trying to actively solve it. And not only waiting for an agency to make a change, but doing what I could in the meantime, while still continuing to advocate for some sort of structural change. Because honestly, my kids weren't going to be in elementary school forever. That was not a long-term solution. So we got it changed. The 300 South project took an extra year for them to get done because they had to spend extra time in the planning phase to address the neighborhood concerns. And some of those, I think, were more baseless than others, like the idea that the property values would go down because of this change. Property values did not go down because of this change. They have gone up significantly. We were able to get two stoplights, including the bike crossing light at 200 East. And because we were doing this huge infrastructure thing with UDOT on Third South, we were able to do the bikeway along 200 East. Because that was the big kind of anchor for that project. And I did get to talk to Aaron about that for years. I can't even remember going out on 200 East with you in the middle of the night and painting on bike symbols before the city was actually painting on like bike share-o markers. So that was fun. It felt a little bit transgressive and I highly recommend doing things like that. So that was my kind of civic experience before I decided to run for office. Is working as a neighborhood chair, getting to know some people in the administration, and getting to know mainly that what works is to show up. You show up consistently, people see that you're there, you start to build a reputation and you start to learn. You start to learn who is able to do what, where you can go to get questions answered. And as you show up in a way that is open and curious and trying to find solutions, people will give you solutions. They will give you, they will entrust you with some responsibilities to see what you can do and to see if you are a worthy partner to keep working with them. Because we have some people in our city who advocate for things that we trust because we know that they will follow through and do it and we rely on them as volunteer work. And we have some people that we don't trust because they just complain and they don't actually help in any way. And I also learned that you needed to be incredibly patient because things are slow. Things are so slow and it feels like it's impossibly slow, but nothing is ever going to change. But 10 years ago, I was out in front of the old city hall with my kids with signs supporting the bicycle master plan. My kids had signs. One of them said, I ride three miles to school and I want to be safe. And another one said that a family, or a city that's safe for bikes is safe for families. Because both of these things are true. At that time, there were only a few painted bike lanes in the city. There was that weird one for like three blocks on 200 East with the no parking on one side of the street. There is a weird little bit on 200 West between, I don't know, south somewhere, like 300 South to the roundabout. That was about it. And then there was the trail. Since then, we have gotten actually a lot of bike lanes and share-oes. We're getting little ballards. We finally have green paint. We have bicycle intersections. When I go from, from my home to my work at my office or to the city hall, I'm able to ride in bike lanes or share-oes the entire way on all of those trips. That wasn't the case 10 years ago. And 10 years ago, it didn't seem like any of that was actually possible. But we were advocating for it and we put plans in place and we built the partnerships and it has happened. That said, like we are still so far away from where we need to be. So, so far away. But we're making incremental progress. And I want you to be able to do that too, right? Provo is a really great city for this because if you come and you show up, we will put you to work. When we lived on Long Island, I tried to volunteer in my kids' elementary school classroom and I was not allowed. Like they were very clickish. They did not know me. I was not allowed to bring cupcakes or anything. I was completely excluded. Provo's not like that. You can come, you can work, and as you do that, you become a trusted community member and you are positioning yourself to do more work either in this community or you're getting the experience so you can take it wherever you end up. Okay. So that's my history and why I'm doing this stuff. Well, I guess the other thing. I'd been asked to run for city council for several years before I finally agreed to do it. I didn't think I was qualified. Part of it was because I didn't think I'd lived here long enough, that I knew the city well enough. And I think I was wrong about that. Like being curious and being willing to learn will, will serve you better than having a long history with the place. Long history is good, but if you're curious, you can get that history from other people and they will happily share that information with you. The other reason I didn't run is I didn't feel like I could because I was just a stay-at-home mom. Because I didn't feel like anybody would respect me with that as my credential. And I will say that everything that makes me good as a city councilor, those are all qualities that I had before I got any graduate degree. Right? I learned some, some useful skills in both of those programs, but my fundamental disposition, my willingness to collaborate, my curiosity, my peacemaking inclinations, and my like crazy attention to detail, all of that I had before I got those things. So whatever skill set that you have is worthwhile and it can be a valuable asset to the community if you trust that it will be accepted. Here it will be. And the other reason I didn't want to run is because I knew it would take a lot of time. And I will say that right now I'm spending between 20 and 30 hours a week on city council work, which is a lot. The chair, Catrice McKay, also spends that much time. I think Becky Bogdan is spending a substantial amount of time as well, probably 20 hours a week. None of the men on the council is spending anywhere near that much time. They're, they're just not. You can take from that what you like. But I take this, this work really, really seriously. What finally pushed me into running was January 6th and the insurrection. Right? Because I think our national politics has reached a really unproductive and toxic type of discourse. And I don't have a lot of hope on that national level. But on our local level, where you are working with your neighbors, where you're dealing with everyday practical concerns, where these are nonpartisan races, like we can actually get things done to help our community and we can do things to hurt our community. But our local decisions are the ones that affect your day-to-day quality of life, not so much the national ones. And I think inasmuch as our local governments are functioning well and creating an orderly system for you to live in, our local national governments are propping up the entire political system. Our poly sci philosopher could prove me right or wrong on this with, with data. But I think that if the dysfunction on the national level were seen at the local level, things would fall apart. It just would not work. Last year, the state legislature tried to run a thing so that we would add an initial after the end of our names for these nonpartisan races for city councils. So a D or an R or an I or an L. And the Utah League of Cities and Towns and other people worked hard to squelch that because that would have been the most destructive thing that we could have done here. I am likely the most liberal member of the council and I would be conservative outside of Utah. So as the most liberal member of the council, I fairly represent my district, which is the downtown area, where we have lots of Black Lives Matter signs and rainbow flags. And we had precincts that went blue for Biden. The rest of the council in the city doesn't represent the same kind of constituency. And sometimes I have difficulty getting them to believe what I'm saying on behalf of my constituents is valid, partly because it's a very different perspective than what they're hearing from their neighbors. And partly because my district has the lowest voter turnout of any district in the city. People, come on. If I knew when I was running that I, if I got 800 votes, I would have my seat. Right? I ended up getting, I don't know, 12 or something. More than enough. That's crazy that I know I can win with that few votes. That means every vote for me matters a lot. And everyone who votes for me and who's in my district should have a disproportionately strong voice, just like people from very low population states have disproportionate representation in the senate. But if you're not voting, then a lot of councilors can say, well, they're just the students. They're not really part of Provo. My friends, you're living here for at least four years, most of you. You're part of this community. You're a vital part of this community. So come on, come engage with us, work with us. I would love that. Are you all registered to vote? Are you all voting this year? Please, please say that you are. I'm fine with you being registered to vote in your home states, especially right now if your home state is, say, Pennsylvania. Like please do your absentee ballot for that. But know that next year is when we have our election for city councilors and for the mayor, like these little local offices. You can register to vote here for those off-year elections. And you should because we make the rules about zoning and parking. And how many of you have had problems with parking here in Provo? Thank you. Yes. So what we're doing affects you on your day-to-day basis. So please, please register to vote and vote here in the local election. And then the next time we have a big senatorial or, or national election and your home state is worth more, yeah, register back there. I'm good with that. But I want you to be involved every year and I want you to feel like you can be involved in this community. Provo is great. I did not realize it was so great when I was an undergrad. I didn't venture away from campus very much. To be fair, Center Street was a lot dumpier than it is right now. It's gotten a lot better. Yeah. Okay. I've yammered on quite a bit. Do you have questions? Because that would be more interesting than whatever else I have to say. Yes?
Doctorate health care here, council work.
Oh, that's been so much fun. So when I was working as the neighborhood chair, I would try to read city code and I'm like, I know this is saying something very particular. It seems like it says this, but I know I'm not reading this right. So going to law school helped me learn how to read code, regulations, statutes, things like that. So learning to read legalese was very good. It's also good to, it's helpful for thinking in a very structured, logical way. So a legal analysis is good for that. Sometimes when we're in a city council meeting, I will end up summarizing for the record everything that we've been talking about. And to be able to get that nice, clean, concise summary is very helpful. And I really like to be the one doing it because as I create that summary, I'm kind of controlling what the record is and the outcome of the conversation. So that's a useful thing. And then on occasion, I have used like deposition interrogation techniques on people. So that's probably not like my, my highest best moment, but that's also really effective. So if we have a developer or a city staff person who is presenting on an issue and I want to make a point, but I don't want to be arguing it myself, I can ask them a series of leading questions so that they are making my point for me. So that's, that's like lawyer skeezy tricks. And so I found that useful. And it does help to have a JD after my name, right? Like that is a credential that some people will give deference to. You shouldn't. I mean, it's a glorified trade degree, but there we are. There we are. All right. Next question. Yes?
Someone talking about the progress of...
When you were talking about the incremental progress of bike lanes and the progression of how the roads have developed over the years, you mentioned that we have a long ways to go. What would you say is your vision for how far we have to come and, and what's left?
So we need to have a, a completely integrated network of safe bicycle facilities throughout the city. And safe means really it needs to be separated, right? So the Provo River Trail is incredibly popular because you don't have cars on it at all. You can ride on that fairly safely. The 200 East bikeway designated for bikes, but it's not as safe as it could be. I can't tell you how many times somebody's almost hit me as they're going east-west, crossing that street. So to have separated bicycle facilities, maybe like the ones on Cougar Boulevard, have you seen those? That's much more helpful. Or where they're adding our little matchstick ballards. Visually, that's helpful. Physically, that's not really a barrier, but it's something. The more we have these infrastructure things built in place, so separated ones, very safe, that's the best standard because if somebody accidentally loses control of their vehicle, you still have a physical barrier to protect you. The ones that aren't separated with a physical barrier, but you have paint and markings, those are still better than nothing because that way drivers are starting to learn that bicyclists belong on the road too. They are also road users who pay tax dollars and who use this to commute. And anytime traffic's bad, they should be happy whenever they see bikes zipping by because that's one less car slowing them down. So getting those in, we need to completely reduce Center Street. We've made some incremental improvements on that. You know what I'm talking about with Center Street? So we've got a couple of speed tables, like the raised crosswalks. Those are great. I think we might, did you say we were going to get another one on West Centers, or East Center Street? Maybe?
Probably next year.
Next year? I'm going to talk to Vern about that. Yeah. I was, was talking to the owner of Guru's and he actually thinks it would be better at 100 East instead of 50 East. He sees the traffic there all the time. I'm like, yeah, let's do it. But Center Street, if we keep cars moving through there at all, I think it should be switched down to one lane. We should expand the amenity area out there for seating. We should have more places for people to walk. We should have bikes going through there so that it becomes a livable gathering space where people want to congregate. We can do that and we can balance the need for parking. But we also need to like redo all of the sewer pipes underneath Center Street. Like there's substantial infrastructure upgrades that are going to cost millions of dollars that have to happen. So we're not going to spend money on like cute superficial upgrades if we're not also going to do that. And so finding money to do that is probably going to mean that we need to, well, there are lots of things that go together. One way that we're able to do Center Street to make it into that kind of human-centered plaza that would be really great for our city is to get a lot more high-density housing downtown. So you've got more people right there. And those people are helping to support the businesses so they're less reliant on people coming in with the car traffic. Although we've got more than enough parking structures to accommodate that. There was just a parking study done for the downtown area that showed that on average, at their highest use time, only 42% of the parking spaces are used in downtown. So there's no need to charge for parking. Like we're not trying to solve for a, a supply-demand issue. Yeah, so we've got more than enough parking for, for what we need down there. But yeah, so we end up being slow on these changes. I want to see... I want to see, yeah, better connections to the Provo River Trail. I'm glad to see that we're getting better signage, wave-binding signage for those trails. It could still be better than what it is. If you don't know where you're going, you're just not going to find the trail to get there. But there need to also be safe bike routes to all of the schools and to connect the schools. We don't have those things yet. So I want a lot. We'll see. Yes? Okay, I'll drink water while you do that.
I was interested in your observation about, I realize this was kind of an aside, but I was interested in your observation about the differences between women and men on the council in terms of the hours worked. And I take your point about sort of like inferring as we will, but I'm curious if you could say anything more about, just abstractly, about the different ways that you observe members of the council having priorities and how the differences in priorities are related to differences in time investment?
Yeah, yeah. Everyone approaches the council differently. And to be fair, we are paid a very small stipend to do this. I lose money for every hour I spend on council work because I get paid so much less for that than I would if I were doing billable hours. So there's a big financial hit for doing that. So a lot of people who end up doing this part-time job, which can take a lot of time, are those who are already financially secure. You do have some people who are in, like, the stay-at-home category, who are supported by a partner, spouse, and they have that economic luxury. You have people who are retired, who are able to devote the time and really want to give back to their community, and this is a meaningful way that they can do that. And then you have some people who are, like, own their own business or are very successful in that, and so they can give themselves the freedom to take the time to work on it. And then you have people like me who are just really lucky that their firm will support them in it. Although before I was hired, I told them that I was considering running for city council and that it would take a lot of time and that they were hiring me with that expectation. So I only work part-time at my day job. I mean, that's a luxury. Most people don't have that luxury. So you have these different types of people who are in a position where they can run for office, right? They have financial and social resources. They've got that social capital that they can run a successful campaign, and they get in the office. So none of us who are on the council are hungry. Right? I think all of us own our own homes. And if you've owned your home in Provo since before, like, 2021, you are in great shape, right? Because your housing costs are far less than anybody who's gotten a home since then or who's paying rent now. So there are some people who are on the council and treat it kind of like being on a board, like a little nonprofit board or something like that, where you're just showing up, you're getting this little information, and you're just giving your little input, right? It's like a little bit of an oversight. If people ask you questions, you're happy to answer them, but you're there, and you're filling this very kind of low-demand function. And if you do that, then most of your time commitment are our city council days where we have our work meetings and our evening meetings. So that can be between, say, five to eight hours for those weeks. So they may spend an average of five to 10 hours every week, every two weeks. Their work would mostly consist of reading the packets, maybe answering emails, asking some questions so that they can answer questions from constituents. Honestly, in some ways, we're like a glorified customer service. And that's what they do. And that's still good and valuable work. That's not a wrong way to do it. Part of the reason Catrice and I spend so much time is we are the chair and vice-chair of the council. So we have additional meetings as leadership meetings. We also will meet with the administration, the mayor's office, and we do more community engagement, like, we talk to people. Catrice answers every email that is sent to her. I do not. But she does, right? That's something that's important to her, and she's very good at that. That's one of her priorities. I think, like, George, George Hanley, he's one of your BYU professors, will answer the emails that are related to his district or that are addressed to him specifically. I'm usually like that, although if there's an email that's about an issue like LGBTQ rights, then I jump in and I handle that one for the council because I don't trust them to do it. Yeah. So, let's see. One of our councilors is a businessman, so he's very interested in scrutinizing finances and making sure that we have no fat, that we've gotten rid of these redundancies and things like that. So that's the lens through which he views it. So he spends, I think, more time on it during budget season and things like that than he does on other issues that aren't as interesting to him. So it really just is what they view the job to be and what they make of it. And because we don't really have a clear job description, really, for like how you're supposed to do this, we can make of it what we want. And they can't fire us, right? We have to go for reelection, and you guys could choose not to keep us in there, but the administration can't say, "You are a crap counselor. You need to get out." And we certainly had councilors in the past who just didn't even read their packets. They just weren't doing any preparation. They would just show up at the meetings, and based on their questions, it was obvious that they had no idea what was going on. It was very frustrating. When we got the new council in, like, one of our first things that Catrice and I did on the training was, "You have to read the packet." Like, we created these expectations for them, and so far, they've been really good. Like, they listen to us. So I'm happy about that. Why is it different between the men and the women? I don't know. Some women are terrible too, right? Like, any group, you've got people who are good, you've got people who are bad, you have people who are responsible, you have people who will slack off, and all of those types of people end up getting elected to public office. And so it's just the luck on that. And it may be that you've got a really good representative who's working super hard, but you disagree with every single decision they make, right? So they may be very, very effective and going against everything you care about. Is that better than somebody who's not effective and does nothing? I don't know. I don't know. Yes?
Oh, sorry. That you feel like you're politically different ideologically than other people on the city council? Have you found ways that you feel like you can have, like, a better discourse with them? Or like, what suggestions would you give people that are, like, trying to promote, like, just like better civil discourse in general?
Oh, yeah, there's so many things you can do. So Catrice is fairly conservative. I'm fairly liberal. One thing that I love is that when she and I agree on something, we get that crap done. Right? Because if we are both agreeing on it, then we are representing so much of the city of Provo with these different views and opinions, and that's something that should be done. So for good discourse, the most important thing is to listen. And to really stop, like, anytime someone's saying something, we are automatically doing a narrative in our head. We're doing a criticism. We're doing an analysis. We're doing an answer. Recognize that you're doing that and put it aside and refocus on them and listen again to what they're saying. Because what they say is not just the words or the ideas expressed, but you will kind of, you can read between that for why this is important, right? These fundamental issues that maybe they haven't articulated to themselves. If you can do that, then you can address the real concerns. But more importantly, if somebody believes that you will listen to them without automatically judging them or dismissing them, then they're going to tell you things. And you will learn amazing and surprising things from people just by listening. But if you are already answering, if you've already prejudged, if you're already cutting them out, you're not going to get any new information, and you won't have the tools that you need to do a collaborative solution. So compromise solutions are not good, right? Compromises are where everybody loses and leaves the mediation very unhappy. Like, they can be successful, but they're not good. But collaborative solutions are one where the core values, the fundamental needs of all sides are met. And figuring out those solutions are really hard because we don't talk about our fundamental needs. We don't talk about those core values. We have all sorts of little stand-ins and symbols and things that we talk about and argue about instead that are never going to address the real problems and bring us together. So listening, deep listening. That's the number-one thing. And so for our meetings, I found that if I had done all of my preparation, like, all of my reading and everything ahead of time and written out my questions, then when there was a presentation, or then when a councilor's making an argument, I didn't have to be thinking through those answers. Those were already there. I could listen to what they were saying. So that's the number-one thing. Yes? Oh, wait, she's bringing the mic.
What are, like, the Provo citizens' perspectives on student involvement? Because, like, most of us are from out-of-town, and I just transferred from Rexburg, and I went to lots of, like, city council meetings there, and, like, the citizens were not a big fan of the BYU Idaho students. What is that? Yeah. And how can we be involved in a way that doesn't, like, step on people's toes?
Oh, step on people's toes, please. Also, welcome in from the cold and the wind. I'm glad that you're down here now. That's good. So I don't know how long this has been going on. Maybe for decades. There's a sense that there are people who live in Provo, they're like the real families, and they're students, who don't really live in Provo, who are not real people, who are not real families. And if you become a married student and have kids, well, then you're almost like a real family in Provo, but not quite. And some of this overlaps with kind of religious attitudes where, like, young, single adults aren't really adults, you know? Like, until you've gotten married and you are qualified to be a bishop, like, you're not really a member in good standing. So some of that seeps into these attitudes. There's a housing shortage in Provo, and because of that, there's a housing affordability issue in Provo, and there are many people who feel that students are taking housing away from families. And so anytime, like, townhomes or condos get bought by an investor who rents them out to students instead of a family, there's a sense of loss and outrage and othering that's really not productive. So that's one side. On the other hand, we know we get a lot of value from BYU, right? There's a lot of energy and activity. We get a lot of innovation. Because we have BYU, we also have these amazing tech hubs, like, lots of innovators and people doing amazing creative things. A lot of people who go to BYU end up coming back or staying in the area. I am one. Like, I thought when I left BYU, like, I was gone, never coming back to Provo. I was very, very surprised that we ended up here. And we like that you guys are, like, great volunteers, right? Like, so much energy. Like, you guys are great for our service projects. Like, please come and keep doing that, right? But I don't know how to get over this hostility to help more people realize that our students are Provo, right? We are not Provo without you, and that a single person living alone has just as much of need and right to safe and affordable housing, to safe transportation, to job opportunities, to food security as somebody who's married with children. Like, you are people. You are living here. We have a responsibility to you, and you have a responsibility to us. I think if you voted more, it would help. Honestly, I do think it would because we have very low voter participation from our students. And there's a sense that you guys just aren't engaged. And maybe that's because when those people were students, like, when I was a student, I wasn't engaged in Provo. I didn't know very much about it. I certainly didn't know anything about local elections or vote in it. And so I had no say in any of it, and I didn't like being here because I didn't have a say. I wasn't engaged. I wasn't involved. Right now, you're in a phase of life where it's, you have so much possibility, right? And it's so all-consuming, right? Your education and your social life, everything that you're doing, that, like, that's energizing, but it also sucks, like, all of the energy out of you so that you don't have time left for civic engagement? And maybe that's why this city, more or less, can get away with thinking that you're not part of us. Because you guys are, you know, pretty busy young people. That's okay. Yeah. I, I don't know. I think we need to recognize that everybody needs to be able to live here and that someone's not more valuable because they're married and have kids. Like, we're just not there. And anytime I call out my fellow councilors on that, and I'm starting to do this more and more, they're like, "No, no, no, no. We love the students. No, we're not biased against them. No, we're not in favor of families." Because this is a distasteful truth that they don't want to admit to themselves, right? That they can't do that. So telling them that is not helpful. But I still do it anyway because we need to change the discourse. And so to change the discourse, we need people like me spending our social capital, and I do spend it every time I say something like that, right? I identify myself as untrustworthy on some family issues by doing that. But we need you guys to show up. Humanize yourselves. Come on. You can do it. Yeah. You're done. They've got to go other places. We're ten till the hour. Yeah. Please, please, please vote. Please, for the love of God, vote this year.
And next year.
And next year. But, right, let's just do the one right now.
And help BYU win the campaign stuff. Auto register. UCU is on our hill, so we need to help. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.